Your microphones on, please. Please shut your cell phones to mute. If you would, time being six o'clock, I will call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Dan?
Here.
Wanda?
Here.
Don?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
Carrie?
Here. We do have a quorum present. Item number three, does any commissioner have a reason to abstain for a financial financial or a non-financial conflict of interest?
I do not.
None?
No.
I do not.
No. Item number four is approval of the agenda.
Move approval of the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Kettering, second by Fox, to approve the agenda as presented. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Agenda is approved. This is the time for public comment. Would any citizen care to make a public comment at this time? Public comment is closed. Item number five, approval of the September twenty first, two thousand and twenty one meeting minutes, and I will abstain from this.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Healy, second by Fox, to approve the minutes for the September twenty first meeting. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. Item number six, claims.
I had one question under legal fees. I don't have it up right now, but there was one fee for like thirteen thousand dollars to a firm that is not a usual firm.
Olivia Miles-Holz.
That's the
It's on page four.
Not that firm out of Sioux Falls, I believe.
Well, the firm's out of Sioux Falls. I just don't know what it's for. Oh, Oliver Miles and Holz. No idea.
Do you know?
Yeah, I don't know.
I know that's the one that on their side. You're right. It's over the definition of a bracket.
I guess I'd like to know follow up. I'm not opposed to being a bill presently, but I'd like to have a follow up on what the purpose for that bill is.
Or do you want to approve them all with the exception of that one until we know what it's for?
That would work too.
I would make that motion.
Okay, so I have a motion on the table to approve the claims except for the legal claim of thirteen thousand
Eight hundred seventy five.
Eight seventy five.
Eight seventy five eighty.
I'll second that move.
So the motion's on the table for the discussion. Again, the motion is to approve all claims except for the legal claim of thirteen thousand eight seventy five eighty. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. September payroll.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Healy, second by Clemish, to approve the September payroll. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. We have amend the two thousand and twenty two annual budget. So there was a email. General fund taxes. Oh, general fund taxes should be stated as six million seven hundred two thousand two hundred thirty one dollars. And historical sites should be one hundred eight thousand eight hundred thirty two. I'm not sure that was in our packet, but she did email that out. So we need a so we do need a motion to approve the following correction corrections to the two thousand and twenty two annual budget.
Move approval.
Second.
So I have a motion by Kettering, second by Fox, to approve corrections to the two thousand and twenty two annual budget in the amount of general fund taxes, six million seven hundred two thousand two hundred thirty one dollars. And historical sites, one hundred eight thousand eight hundred thirty two dollars. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Unanticipated revenue highway department. So we have the Boy Scouts of America for thirteen thousand one hundred twelve dollars and seventy six cents.
That's just a pass through thing, isn't it?
Yes.
Don't they usually go through emergency management?
Yes.
Why this one went through the height?
Was The picnic shelter thing with the storm shelter went through emergency manager.
Yep. So this must be some work to a road or something out in that area.
I'd move approval of the anticipated revenue in the amount of thirteen thousand one hundred twelve dollars and seventy six cents.
Second.
So I have a motion by Healy, second by Clemish, to approve the unanticipated revenue. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. We also have unanticipated revenue for the sheriff in the amount of two thousand nine hundred eighty six dollars. And that looks like an insurance claim.
Move approval.
Second.
So I've been motioned by Clemish, second by Kettering, to approve the unanticipated revenue for the sheriff. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. And the last item under number six is Native American Day holiday, and I do believe
Mr. Hano is here.
Oh, gosh, sorry. Come on up if you'd like to say anything. This is for a request to make this a holiday this year. An official holiday. No.
I don't think you
There should be a little button. Maybe we're unplugged.
There you go.
I had mentioned in that email, you know, that the banks are closed and the state offices are closed and almost all other counties are closed, but I actually left out the most important point. But Yankton is one of the counties with the most, the greatest Native American heritage history. And it's really an important way to honor the Native Americans. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Any comments on the request? When we reviewed the employee handbook last year, we did choose not to include this one as an official holiday.
Now, I think this would be just a small token of appreciation, you know, for what the county team has done working through the pandemic. There's not a lot of extra cost giving a holiday.
Is it just for this year or for every year?
This motion would be just for this year. If we want to do it every year, we actually have to amend the handbook.
No, I would just clarify. Yeah.
Yes, I'd make a motion to give the day off for the county for Native American Day for two thousand and twenty one.
There's a motion on the table. Do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Any further motions?
I'd make a comment if I can.
You bet.
Just the point is that this year, every year, I would assume it would be every year, and so I think it should be addressed in the handbook. Added and one removed or simply added, but when we went through the handbook, the intention was here's all the holidays. I think we had input from department heads on such, so.
Any other comments before we move forward? So there'll be no vote on that. All right, item number six is closed. We will move to item number seven. Mr. Paul.
Good evening.
Good evenings.
The first item that I brought forth today is the LMPG. That is actually the federal grant that helps assist pay our salaries, our travels, some of the other businesses that we do. This is an annual. We've done it every year, but they renew it. And we, I kind of dropped the ball. It should have been last month, but they said we're good. They know we're a good county for it, so I just need a motion to go ahead and approve to go back into contract with the LMPG for two thousand and twenty two.
And this is the one that pays half your salaries?
Yes. Yep.
Move, make a motion to approve. Contract.
So I have a motion by Clemish, second by Healy, to approve the agreement with the state of South Dakota for office of emergency management. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Cool, thank you.
Approved. You just need the one
Just the one signature on that particular one. The next item I have here is that we
Can we comment on that?
Oh, yes, go ahead. Sorry.
You know, if you look through the next forty some pages, it is saying there's a heck of a lot of reporting and monitoring. Who does that and what's the follow up?
We were required every quarter to submit the documents that are required in this book to what they call Web E O C. It's a secure website. The state reviews it to make sure it starts at the regional area, make sure everything that we're supposed to be doing is done, and then it's sent on to peer for final approval. So if we miss something, we don't get a document put in, we don't do, we have to go cover, do it in meetings with you guys, meetings with the communities out in, you know, different areas. We have to do that to make it up so that we can get our quarterly payment of what we submit in, and then we do it. There's a form called an eighty five twenty one, which is where we put every document of like my salary, Aaron's salary, travel, anything like that goes on it that is submitted for reimbursement, and we get half back. And with this now September over, this is actually starting the new fiscal year for the federal government, so our, all of our final paperwork has to be done by the end of the month to get our final check of the last two quarters. Does that answer your question, Don?
Item twenty two terms. By accepting this agreement, the sub recipient assumes certain administrative and financial responsibilities. Failure to adhere to these responsibilities without prior written approval by the state shall be a violation of the terms of the agreement, and the agreement shall be subject to termination. How do we know that everything's being taken care of?
If there, if something isn't done in that quarter, Sherry will get a letter, and so will Patty stating that we didn't fulfill our duties in that quarter.
So the state is our supervisor.
Yes.
And Paul, this is the same agreement we've done for many, many years and half of your salary and Aaron's salary is covered by this, so by not agreeing to that, then the county would have to pay the other half of your salary and Aaron's salary.
Correct, so, and you know, and they, they, they verify, I mean, that's why, and the state's been really good. If we'd missed something, they want to make sure because they also get audited by the federal government. Because they get paid a certain amount because they actually have employees that work for the state that are under the same contract at the state level, so we want to make sure that all the monies keep flowing to the state as much as possible.
I'm certainly in favor of getting the money. I just, I didn't want to get caught up.
No. And we, we're, we're, I don't want to brag, but we're one of the few counties that get it done on time each year because, or each month, because there's a lot that needs to be done, and it just, you know, we download all the meeting minutes that so we can show that we were here, or if we were in another community, or if we were at this training, or if we, whatever, you know, we did the exercise here over the archery tournament. That's all being put in, so they show we actually do stuff. You know, the PDM plan that we'll be talking next, you know, we had to do all that, and that's part of the requirement that we do in that process, so.
Thanks.
You betcha.
Thanks, Paul.
All right, go ahead. Didn't Aaron get an award?
Yes.
Recently, our deputy emergency manager, Aaron Ancheski, recently got an award.
Yeah, she got, she was nominated for the South Dakota Achievement Award this year, so we were real happy to see that. And then our office got collaboration award from United Way, which is kind of cool also, so, but you know, anyway, yeah, it's striving to make it better.
Thank you, and we appreciate that. Yep, a good opportunity to tell the community about the positive things and that your department and Aaron will recognize. That means a lot, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. To go on, I don't want to be the one who hold up the meeting all day long, but the next one is the resolution for the pre-disaster mitigation plan. Most of you should, you should have got a copy of it. District three and our office have been working with the Yankton and the other communities to get what are some of the things that they need in case something happens again, you know, what can we do to prevent it? You know, in our plan, we've got flooding and raising, you know, part of the, is there actually the road raising on what we're, you guys are going to be talking next is part of the plan. So we've updated, we want each community found out. Most of them are flooding issues, if you imagine that, but how can we make it better? So we went through all this. We've updated the plan. It's eighty some pages long, almost ninety, and it was approved by FEMA. And so now we have to approve, you guys have to approve the plan so that now it'll be official. I know the city of Lesterville is approving ours tonight, and Gable already has approved it, so. But anyway, that's next.
Are there any? Oh, wait.
Second.
So I get a motion by Kettering, second by Healy, to approve the Yankton County Hazard Mitigation Plan Resolution. Further discussion?
And this is just to apply for, for one, or to apply for one, or which?
We've already gotten the plan.
Prove that one.
No, that's not the plan.
That's not the one.
So this is Kind of what we do with the office plan.
Okay, to, okay, the plan, got it.
So this one was at our meeting a couple meetings ago.
Yep.
We've seen that.
Yep.
So.
And this is, and we, you guys approved it, so we sent it off to FEMA.
Yep.
And FEMA sent it back saying it's good to go, and now you just need to make the resolution to make it so that we can apply for more monies.
Adopted. So we have to approve it and then go to FEMA, and then we have to approve it again?
No, no, this is it.
Okay.
FEMA's approved it. You're just now adopting it.
Okay.
Resolution.
And we, we can't adopt it till FEMA approves it.
Hey, they make a change.
All right.
So the motion on the table is to approve the resolution. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Resolution approved.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul.
Paul, did you have anything to add for the FEMA for Stone Church elevation for the next item, or?
I'm sure there'll be questions.
Okay, I'm not leaving. I'm gonna hang around.
Hang tight.
Are you trying to slip out of here, so I?
All right, item number seven is closed. We are now, item eight. Accept Grant Award for Phase One Approval FEMA D R forty four forty, South Dakota H M G P, Project Thirty Five R, Yankton County Stone Church Road Elevation, and that's quite a mouthful. So this has been kind of going in the background ever since the two thousand and nineteen flood. And after floods, you have the opportunity to apply for, for grants and funding to address issues in your community that you don't want to happen again, essentially is what this is. So it's a mitigation grant. And we've been going back and forth with FEMA about how to handle the potential raising of the road that leads up to Stone Church Bridge, because we also know we need to replace the bridge itself. And the county felt we could not wait for FEMA to give some feedback on the whole project together, the bridge and the road. So we did proceed to do some engineering on the bridge itself, and we're going to apply for a big grant funding there. Whereas this is to study essentially what it would take to raise the road and the potential impact upstream. So this is not actually to raise the road. This is a grant to study the scenario and the effects, and if we can raise the road without causing more negative effects in the long run. So Joe, did you have anything you wanted to add? Joe's been sitting through a lot of these discussions when we've been on the phone with the state team and FEMA Region Eight, is that right, as well? So if you look through all that paperwork, essentially the, this study, this phase one study that is being presented is about eighty five thousand dollars, so it's eighty four thousand four hundred seventy seven dollars and sixty cents. Of that, the feds would pick up sixty three thousand three hundred fifty eight dollars and twenty cents. The state would kick in eight thousand four hundred forty seven dollars and seventy six cents, which means Yankton County share would be twelve thousand six hundred seventy one dollars and sixty four cents. So tonight, what we're being asked to do, if we approve this, is the county is willing to spend about twelve thousand dollars to do a study on the effects of raising that road. So what are, what's the gain and what's the potential downside, and if there is a downside, can it be mitigated so there, there isn't a downside essentially? Paul, did you want to add anything to all of that, or?
The only thing that I have to say is that with all the meetings done, all the meetings that we have sat through listening with FEMA to get this accomplishment, I mean, because at the beginning, you know, any raise of water was a no. And by the explanations on everything that went on and with the engineerings and the work that Mike done and everybody else communicating with, to me, this is a huge hurdle to get this project to move forward. So we'd be almost foolish not to do it, not because we did all the work, but we've got FEMA on our side right at this time.
Yep, there were, there were a lot of long meetings.
Yes.
And we had to change our strategy several times, working with IMEG. They were on the phone, District Three did a lot of, I don't want to say negotiations, but figuring out the best approach to, to try and get this bridge, if we put in a brand new bridge, we want it to be usable, and the people in that area want it to be usable.
The huge part was the cost benefit analysis of this redo, along with the engineer to prove that this would be a justifiable.
Correct. Yep, correct. So that's what we are being asked to approve tonight is essentially the expenditure of twelve thousand dollars, six hundred, twelve thousand six hundred seventy one dollars and sixty four cents toward Phase One of this project. Any questions on that now?
When do they expect that it's going to be completed, the assessment?
You know, I don't recall a deadline to get that done.
This agreement is one year.
One year. Okay, thank you.
It's not a year, and then they sort of then add the done, that maybe just move it up that quicker. I know the goal was possibly to have a two thousand and twenty three construction site.
We we're hoping we get the big grant, and if this whole project would be approved, it'd be all done at one time, because there's no sense doing a bridge and then coming back and closing a road to raise the road, so that's, and that was part of a lot of the negotiations too, is, is to try to get the timing correct.
Timing is difficult because the big grant comes through the state. This is coming through the Fed's program. And nobody will pump the brakes for the others.
Right, and if we do get the big grant next year, I believe we have three years to get that project done, three years to spend the money, so.
I, once this is done, I would like an opportunity to discuss in a meeting with the people who live up there, because there is some concern, especially Stone Church Bridge. Some of the farmsteads are pretty close to where it floods, especially the church, and I'd like to get some input from the citizens out there, once we have, once we have this study done.
And I do believe that's part of the study is to do all of those public meetings. So that would be, and much of this work is from the engineer themselves, and they would be involved in that. District Three. Any other questions or concerns? Entertain a motion?
I'd move to to approve the grant in the amount of, well, just do the whole amount, amount of sixty eight, eighty four thousand four hundred seventy seven dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
So I have a motion by Healy, second by Kettering, to approve the grant application for raising stone, for evaluating the raising of Stone Church Bridge. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. And we are a bit ahead of six thirty, because the next one is a second reading, so we have to wait for that. We have to wait for Board of Adjustment, because that will be a specific time. Jessica, would you be willing to go? Item number eleven, we'll go ahead and sneak that in.
Great. I'm here tonight to ask for approval and signature of a contract between Yankton County and Matt Archer. Matt has thankfully agreed to come back and help us this year. Unfortunately, with the unexpected turnover that we've had recently, we've lost a lot of knowledge, and Matt's willing to come back and show us how to extract data that we're going to need in the upcoming assessment process from our programs, and he's going to show us how to, how to use some of those programs and do different things. So the contract that I'm looking for is he would be done with part of the, the hours this year with a complete end of the contract, March first of the following of next year. It would be fifty dollars an hour, not to exceed five thousand dollars total. I have the money in the budget. I'm not asking for more money. We just need the training. And thankfully, he's willing to do that.
Any questions on what's being asked of Mr. Archer or cost? All right, I would entertain a motion.
So I'd move approval of the agreement between Yankton County and Matt Archer.
Second.
So I have a motion by Healy, second by Kettering, to approve the agreement for services with Matt Archer. Hourly basis is fifty dollars and not to exceed five thousand, essentially completed by March first, two thousand and twenty two. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you so much.
Oh, does it, does it say who has to?
It does say.
I can sign it if you'd like. Did you have a copy of that one for the road? Got a copy? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have to wait till about six thirty. Unless you'd like to, well, we've got five minutes. Any commissioner updates in that time? Oh, that clocks. I'm sorry, that clock is slow, so we have one minute. Well, we'll wait one minute.
If this zoning passes tonight, like to get a new copy of the zoning ordinance book prepared and then distributed and get it updated on. and get it updated on the website after the twenty days with all the changes. Uh, but the planning commission and then us as Board of Adjustment would need a updated copy as well.
Do you want to do items for next week, next meeting at six?
I think it's six thirty, so that clock's slow, so it is six thirty now. Just a second. All right, item number nine, this is the second reading of Medical Cannabis License Ordinance twenty one dash Z N dash zero seven. At this time, I will go ahead and take public comment. Would anyone care to make a public comment on the licensing ordinance for cannabis, medical cannabis? Please go ahead and state your name when you come to the podium.
Hi, Ned Horstedt with the Cannabis Industry Association of South Dakota. Uh, been down there here since this was first drafted, I guess, with the, um, Planning and Zoning Commission. Think you've got a solid ordinance here. Uh, every one of these meetings, I gotta say, not a fan of any sort of cap, but I do appreciate that you've done much better than a lot of the other, uh, local government entities that have been in front of at the city and county level. So, um, appreciate the change to add, uh, some sort of transferability. Or at least giving preference to someone if they want to hand their business off to their kid or, you know, another business owner after they get ready to, to sell. So, uh, with that, I appreciate all your work on here and I really like how the government operates down here in Yankton County, so thanks for having me.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? All right, at this time, we will close public comment on the Medical Cannabis Licensing Ordinance. Bring it back to the commission for further discussion or motion. There were some changes made at the last hearing, so. Discussed.
They, they were discussed, so they are in bold and underlined. Um, so I left the language in that we had at the first reading, but bold and underline for language that we talked about. As Mr. Horstedt talked about, we did add, um, that language about preference in the transfer section. If you look at section three E, we talked about allowing if they would apply in November or December, the way it read, they would have to reapply. So in section three E, I noticed that we would have to exclude any license applied for in twenty twenty one to match up with section six E seven, which says, however, any license approved in twenty twenty one shall be effective and valid through December thirty one, twenty twenty two. And that was the language that need had. So, given the fact that we're at the end of the application period, it'd be good for all of next year. And then the transfer. And that was basically anything that we talked about at the first reading.
Go ahead. Yes, please.
Uh, one, one question that I had on the, um, licensing ordinance is it, it says that app, applications are first come, first served, basically, uh, to turn them in. So, uh, just want a little bit of clarity around, is that, you know, you pass it tonight and there's a twenty day period after notice. Will there be something that says on this date, that's when applications will begin to be accepted? Or can people turn in an application tomorrow, I guess is the, the question?
It, it says, one, they can't turn it in before the state has finalized it. And then the second section that I believe I talked to the auditor about, it says, applications will be available after the effective date of this ordinance.
Okay.
So.
And typically we publish, when like an ordinance change will publish that date.
Yep.
What would be the date of that, if it gets approved tonight?
Assuming it would be October twenty sixth, because today's the fifth, so twenty days.
Cool, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Are the commissioners generally, um, good with the inclusion of the underlying language in what was presented?
I am.
Yeah, the, the only thing I came across, uh, section eight, uh, where we talk about shall comply with Yankton County Ordinance twenty twenty, Article fourteen. I, I think a change that would be better there would just be shall comply with the Yankton County zoning ordinance and just leave twenty twenty, Article fourteen, because we've seen how articles change and they get updated. When we update this with this zoning ordinance, it's not going to be County Ordinance twenty twenty anymore, it'll be something else. So I think a more general statement would be warranted there.
So just Yankton County's zoning ordinance?
Yes, and that way as changes happen, which they always do, it's, it's not twenty twenty, Article fourteen. Yes.
Does that seem reasonable, Deb?
I caught something else before that, sorry.
Uh, section eight signage and advertising, uh, section A.
Okay.
I would just say Yankton County zoning ordinance and not have County Ordinance twenty twenty, Article fourteen, just make it more general.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
And just so everyone knows, because I proof all the time, but I missed it. So it goes, four is number of licenses, five is license fees, six is application process. And I repeated six, so it needs to go seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen.
All right, so if we make a motion to approve tonight, that should be made with amendments discussed tonight, or should we include that all in the motion?
I think yours, I wouldn't consider being.
No.
Yours is kind of a typo graphical. So, so we need to include with the, with the, um, the amendment of changing essentially Article fourteen to Yankton County's owning ordinance.
And all other.
In section eight.
And then just do, and all other.
Underline language.
Line language in the second.
Okay, so if, if we've got a commissioner who's feeling really bold tonight to get that, so let's let the commissioner make the motion, we'll make sure the motion is good before we second. So do we have a volunteer?
Well, I would move to approve the proposed second, the more proposed medical cannabis licensing ordinance in accordance with Yankton County zoning and all the emboldened and underlined items that are included in the proposed ordinance.
As well as Dan's correction is section eight.
I think that was the first part.
Oh, it was, oh, sorry.
The inclusion of the Yankton County zoning ordinance.
Sorry.
In section eight.
That we were adopting in accordance with it.
Or if Mr. Healy would like to re-say it.
I'll second it.
Okay, so I have a motion by Fox, second by Healy to approve the Medical Cannabis Licensing Ordinance number twenty one, Z N zero seven. And the words Article fourteen will be stricken and replaced with Yankton County zoning ordinance and all of the underlying language in the proposal will be included in the final ordinance. Further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote on this.
Yes.
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 Joe?
Yes.
Yes. Motion or ordinance passes five zero. It will now be advertised for two weeks and take effect twenty days thereafter, tentatively November fourth, if all the publishing goes well.
So we, for the public, uh, we won't accept applications until November fourth?
Correct.
Okay, so the public knows November fourth is the day.
Correct, as long as, well, the state's supposed to have their stuff done by October twenty ninth, I think, so. All right, item number nine is closed. We are at item number ten, entertain a motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
I would move that we go into Board of Adjustment.
Second.
And a motion by Fox, second by Clemish to sit as Board of Adjustment, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed nay, motion carries five zero. Item number ten. Uh, Sandra Pierce, variance is.
She here?
Come on up and would you introduce yourself and explain what you're asking of the commission tonight? Or the Board of Adjustment tonight?
Good evening, I'm, we're Sandy and Tony Pierce. We reside at one twenty gallons place at the lake and we are requesting a variance, um, of our lot, or excuse me, to be able to build a garage onto the west side of our residence, because, um, the hardship is such that on the east side, we have utilities of water and that, uh, lines and that. So we cannot do, um, any building on that side and on the south end is our drain field. So the variance request is to, um, be able to put the side of our garage, um, five foot from our lot line.
Change it. Can you change the picture?
Even having to, to build a garage, that's a fairly odd shape to conform to that. So you're really putting a lot of effort on this, so.
Yeah, and, um, and then the very front yard is the septic tank. So it's been quite a challenge to be able to figure out how to put the garage in there.
Any questions from the commissioners of the applicants at this time?
Bill, what is this zone current?
R two.
Pre-zoning, really small. Do you know how big that lot is currently?
Fifty by a hundred.
Oh, it's pretty small, because R two is now is a full acre and you're probably substantially smaller than that.
Yeah.
So. Okay, so yeah, there's. Yep.
All right, you're welcome to sit down, we have to take some public comment.
Thank you.
At this time, would any citizen care to make a public comment on this variance application? There being no interest, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the commission for further discussion. You want to walk through the findings?
Sure. I'll move approval.
Let's, let's walk through the findings first on, just a second.
Okay, so we've got, uh, Apkins requesting a variance five foot to twenty five, uh, or a variance of twenty five feet.
Twenty feet. A variance of twenty feet, because.
The finding say a variance of twenty five feet.
Isn't twenty, it's twenty five foot setbacks. Got it.
Uh, the planning found there was the hardship was not shared by other properties, uh, will not be detrimental to adjacent properties. It's not for convenience, profit or caprice. It is not recurring sufficiently to provide remedy with the zoning amendment. Application submitted, uh, topography and size of the lot not applicable to other lands, structure of buildings in the same district. Previous variances to setbacks have been granted in Yankton Counties. This is not a result of the actions of the applicant. Um, no special privileges being given, they were, uh, non-conforming use is not considered. Publications and mailings went out, uh, public hearing that was held at Planning and Zoning, commit, uh, Planning Commission approved this five O. And use is allowed in that district. Now move approval of the variance.
I'll second that motion.
So I have a motion by Kettering, second by Clemish to, uh, approve the variance application for the Pierces. Further discussion?
Yeah, for further discussion, I, I think this is an example of why the zoning ordinance gives us the ability to grant variances. This is a, an odd lot, pre-zoning and it just makes sense to approve this variance. Uh, these individuals just want to build a garage so they can enjoy their property. There's none of the neighbors or the, um, people who are notified are in here. Doesn't appear to, that any of the neighbors have a problem with this and I think this is a good project and I hope it passes. Yes.
They actually contacted all the neighbors before they knew they did go through this process and they were all in favor of it, so.
Any other discussion?
I'll say that I typically am not a fan of using variances, uh, I think we do it improperly quite often, but I do feel, um, somebody with a home or lot that was zoned pre, you know, they're previous to zoning, um, is something that was out of their hands. So I would tend to agree that this would be a good use of a variance.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 No, uh, variance passes four one, you are good to go.
Thank you.
So I need a motion to go back into regular session.
Before we do that, I'm just trying to understand, uh, Sherry, are you, are you just don't vote for variances anymore or what's? I guess what, which, what type of variance would meet your standard? And if, if the answer is none, that's fine, I'm just, I'm just curious.
It would be darn few and the reason I say that is we know about this issue. This is, this lot is not the only lot out there that has this issue. And if we want to truly address it versus just giving variances, as our zoning ordinance tells us, we need to put it in the ordinance somewhere, uh, to address pre-zoning lots, Brookings County does it. And I've mentioned that before, but, but no one has shown any interest to actually fix the ordinance to address this style of issue. The other thing is, when we went through ag zoning, we changed the set lot line setbacks. We need to probably go back and visit all of these areas. And so that's my reasoning is we have the tools in place to fix this bigger issue, but we choose not to do it.
Um, and I, I really think that's a great point. So you're, are you talking about adding a section in the zoning about pre-zoning lots?
I encourage you to go out and read Brookings Counties, how they handle that. And if there are certain sized lots, there are certain, certain differences in lot line setbacks. So I think there's another way to handle this versus giving variances, which technically you can give a variance for everything out there. You can argue a variance for everything out there. Yeah, and, and I think we get in a pickle in Turner County. If you ask their planning commission today, they'll say the hardest thing is to go back because they were given too many variances. And I believe it was the Supreme Court told them that. So.
I guess I'm just trying to, uh, you bring up some great suggestions and we should really look at doing that, uh, because we'll be in the situation where it takes four out of five to pass a variance. And if, if, if somebody's gone, in all likelihood, that variance will be denied. So it is something we should address and I, I guess, uh, the, the place to start would be with the planning commission. And let's bring those changes to make our zoning ordinance useful, uh, and and so I guess people have clear expectations, because the feedback I'm getting, you know, particularly with some of the variants, sometimes they're approved, sometimes they're not and. The public's perception, at least from my, um, from what I'm hearing, is it's, it's pretty arbitrary.
I think I've been pretty consistent.
You, you have, um, but consistently voting no, because there's an issue. Is I think a better solution would be to fix the problem with it.
Discuss it during ordinance changes and nobody had an appetite to make the change. The, I think specifically, the response was, let's just keep doing variances. And that's. I mean, I tend to agree it needs to be addressed. I would disagree with finding two that the request of variance is not reoccurring sufficiently. To provide remedy. I think it needs to be addressed. I'd move, uh, we come out of board of adjustment and into regular session.
Second, to have a motion by Healy, second by Fox, to go back into regular session. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries. We are sitting in regular session. We have done number eleven. We are at number twelve. And Mr. Billings? Oh, come on up then. I was, I was told Mr. Billings would be the lead on this, so. We'll let you relax a little longer.
Trust me, he'd be the lead for sure.
So go ahead and introduce yourself, sir.
Thank you. Uh, I'm Dan Fox and, uh, Fox and Youngburg. Um, we have, uh, had the contract for public. Defender services, indigent representation with the county since nineteen ninety nine. You know, we're just in a situation, I think the, that the commission would be aware of. Uh, recently, I know the state's attorney's office came in front of the commission. Relating to some funds that were available in the American Rescue Plan Act. For. Situations where court backlogs resulting from, you know, COVID related type things. Cause the backlog, uh, in the court system and, and that certainly happened here. I think. Uh, anybody associated with court system could see that. I mean, there was a period of. Time where for approximately a year that really worked any trials going forward and a lot of cases were continued. Um, in the meantime, of course, the usual cases continue to come in, and so there's certainly. Just a bit of a bottleneck that's going to have to kind of be worked through and we're, we're seeing that and. I know that the commission, um, approved, uh, some additional. Funding from that Amer- American Rescue Plan Act for the state's attorney's office for new staff. And I think at this time, they now have three full-time staff, uh, in one part-time. And, you know, we don't handle all the exact same cases they do, but we handle. A large majority of the criminal caseload. Um, there's certainly conflicts and certainly people that hire private attorneys. But then again, we also do some cases with the attorney general's office that's outside of their purview. So what we would like to be able to do is to add possibly another attorney. To, in the short term, to just get through this, this, uh, bit of a backlog. And, uh, I guess what we're really proposing is that. If the commission would see it. Uh, to be an acceptable solution, we'd ask for some of that funding from the Amer- American Rescue Plan Act. Uh, and as I understand it, potentially that could go on for three years. And so I think I would, we've decided that the way we would pose that is. Pretty much essentially as the state's attorney's office did an additional, uh, funds for additional attorney. You know, we, uh, we don't have anybody that we could say we have in mind at this moment because. Without that funding, we're not really able to do that. I, I think the commission knows that, uh, what we do. We're paid a set amount. Um, that set amount has not changed, um, since twenty sixteen. And at that time, you know, I presented, uh, information to the, to the county commission that showed for. Uh, people doing the same sort of work that we were doing with similar caseloads, similar numbers of dollars and misdemeanors. Uh, that we were the lowest paid by a fair amount. And I think it's safe to say that that continues today, and that's okay. I mean, we're not, we're not complaining about that. We understand that the county has a lot of demands. Um, I feel uncomfortable coming in front of the county commission and asking for more money when, uh. You know, there's issues with roads and so on. And so we really just haven't done that. We just continue to do what we do, but. Um, what happens is, of course, uh, like everybody, uh, we pay all, we pay our own expenses. We're not provided health insurance, we're not, you know, et cetera. So all the overhead, we front that. Um, and so all those costs go up every year, you know, and so essentially we're falling behind a little bit every year. So what we're trying to do is just get a little help to try to break that bottleneck. Uh, maybe we can do a little more private work. Um, if we're not, I mean, we, we've gone from a period of time when we started with this contract where. You know, it, but didn't take up nearly as much time and now. Uh, I really don't hardly take any private work on. Um, I, I take some. Criminal cases because I'm going to be in criminal court anyway, but essentially I'm not taking a lot of private work. And so, um, and I think that's true with Lucy as well, so. Uh, that's what we're asking, and if, if my understanding of this funding is correct. Um, that's just something that could be accessed, uh, governmentally and, um, you know, wouldn't cost, uh, Yankton County. And I, as I understand it, it is the type of funding that you, uh, if you don't access it. You, you know, you don't use it, you lose it. So anyway, that's what we're asking. Um, and what I would ask is I think. With Yankton County, I think, uh, uh, staff attorney position, I think, was something like sixty three thousand dollars. Um, but I also would ask you to consider, uh, the fact that, uh, the overhead that we have to. To pay and, uh, that we would want if we have another attorney come in to. Assist with that overhead, so. I guess the request we're going to make at this time would be for seventy five thousand dollars per year for three years. Under the American Rescue Plan Act, um, and we just throw that, uh, open to the, uh, commission for discussion and. And, uh, hopefully it's something that, you know, could happen, so. I guess that's, that's my request.
Okay, at this time, are there questions? I don't think we're probably going to make a decision tonight. This is probably something we need to investigate. Is there more information we need from?
You weren't looking for a motion tonight, you're just bringing up a proposal, is that correct? That's true. I mean, obviously, the best case scenario could be great if there, there was a motion that was approved. But I completely understand if, uh, if you folks want to take a look at that and just make sure that that qualifies them. From my understanding of it, it would. When we were at the state convention, um, our, our county commissioner association actually has a contract with, uh, I Bailey. And when we have questions like this, they advised us to forward it to them. And then they'll give us, okay, that, that will qualify or won't, and, and then come back to us, so that, they were very, uh. I'm very sure that that's what the process do, just so we at the county don't end up having a bill that we thought would qualify. And then for some reason it didn't, because they're, they're the experts. So I would, I guess, um. I would feel comfortable if we go that route and check into it and, and see if something like that would qualify. And then we revisit this, uh, at a later time with it, with it.
I, I would think at the meeting in two weeks, we should be able to make some type of a decision on that.
I would second that motion if that was a motion.
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion or.
No, no, but, but I do highly encourage if you are sitting here with questions. About what their office does, what they're planning for this position, what the plan is after three years, et cetera. That you need to be funneling those questions to this law firm. So that we're better prepared to discuss it next meeting.
So one thing I had a question on, with, with government funding comes lots of paperwork, of course, and documentation. Do you have a? Trend of your caseload or any backlog that's increased due to, you know, COVID and court cases and can. Or could you provide one, I guess, because I'm sure we need to. We're going to be asked for, where did we spend the money and why?
Sure. I guess the only thing I can say is that we're really in, as. Essentially the same position as the state's attorney's office. I mean, we're handling those same caseloads to. So to the extent that that has been approved is my understanding, uh, we're really not any different than that.
Any other questions at this time?
Would it be difficult to update, uh, for surrounding counties, five counties, on what they pay? Or similar size of state?
You know. What, I'll tell you. Actually have that information. You know, I can, now, these are not necessarily surrounding counties. These are counties that you'll remember when the state's attorney's office. Uh, had their presentation, uh, they went through and they looked at. People with similar caseloads, so they're not necessarily surrounding counties, but they're, um, different counties, um, that have those things. And so I will just, I can show you. And this is per month with the, a. And now they're all different because some, um. Multiple contracts. So for instance, you'll see Brown County. They have contracts with seven different attorneys, is my understanding, or seven. Um, that's different. Um, some were more straightforward like ours. But that is, that is the deal. You'll see that, uh. We are the lowest there, but, um, and there's a few that are closer. We don't have figures for twenty twenty two on, uh. I think union, but, um, with the rest of them, we do, so. That'd just give you an idea.
Your current contract is, uh, when does that go through?
Um, you know, we've just, it's just extended because, um, we've just. We don't have it for a extended time. You know, we've always, in fact, I will just throw out to you for future consideration that. You know, this, it's really a different commission than when we did this before. At one point, what we wanted to do rather than just wait an extremely long period of time was to sign a contract. And I know that we're not, right now, we're not here talking about that because, um, you've already done the budget for this year. So that's a future thing, but, um, we had proposed before that, uh, we enter into a longer term. And with just smaller incremental increases so that we kept up, um, rather than coming back and wanting. You know, such a big bump. And so that's certainly something we'd be open to at any time, but. Uh, but that's not what we're here for today. We just became aware of these funds and thought if. If those are available and that's something that we could do in the short term without costing the county any money, we thought that's something we'd try to do.
Just a point of clarification, your county comparison. Does not include any of the other court-appointed fees, correct? Just your office?
That's completely true.
So, for example, this month, there was an extra. Twenty eight thousand nine hundred and seventy seven dollars and ninety five cents in fees requested.
That's completely true, and there's other ones on that list that would be exactly the same. Because conflict of interest cases, as you know, um, are not, you know, they don't show up, so then those get farmed out.
And what would the contract include? Does it include Yankton County mental health hearings or are those extra?
No, we do those as part of our contract. Which, which is another point, I guess, those other folks that are doing all those cases. Because we're here in Yankton County, we do have the Human Services Center, so. We do have those that we do in addition to the other things, which other counties don't do, but anyway, that's.
I have another commitment I have to go to, so I'm gonna hand Joe, you're in charge. Thank you for coming and I'll probably be shooting you some questions.
Sure, no problem.
So how many of those cases are left in your bottleneck?
You know, I, I mean, I, I couldn't say that. I'm just saying that. It's definitely more than there have been for a long time. There's a lot of cases, I think, you would know that would get continued. From one stack week to the next and things just continue to add up, so. Um, you know, I couch this in terms of COVID. Because it's certainly partly that. I mean, it's not only that, but, um, but because that's where the funds are available from, so. That's why we discuss it in, in those terms, so it's certainly part of the problem.
And further questions for Mr. Fox?
All right.
Put it, probably put it on the next, uh, meeting's agenda, but someone will let you know for sure. Okay.
We should write that down now before we forget. Mr. Billings?
Wanda, Don. I'm John Billings, I guess, part-time deputy state's attorney. So, uh, this is not the first time I've appeared before a commission about the public defenders contract. Um, just for a backstory here, I will tell you that I previously appeared probably five, six years ago. Where we tried to convince the commission that having a written contract that Dan alluded to was a good idea and no action was taken. And so I'm here again, really, on my behalf and also Rob's behalf to here to support Dan and Lucy. Uh, and their request for the funds, and in my view, I would also support an increase in their salaries. And funds just to raise their salaries. Uh, it's our view and my view certainly that. They do an incredible job with very limited resources. You know, we've, we've had a relationship for around twenty years and during that time. We've had very few headaches once the cases are completed, which tells you they're doing their job. And so they're not only representing the county, representing defendants, but they're protecting the county. And I think it's also fair to say our view has been they've saved the county a lot of money through the years. When they've had special cases, by just doing their work, not filing frivolous things. Uh, that didn't need to be part of the lawsuit or particular criminal case. I will tell you, I don't have any numbers for you, but I can tell you in that six-year time, the demands on. Not only state's attorney's office, but the public defender's office have grown immensely. There's a change in the way courts conducted, there's a change in how much court we have, and that's in part because of the change in the judges we have. Uh, they expect a lot more from, I think, our office and also from the public defender's office. Uh, and I best, I think the best example to, uh, give an example of that is when you. Start getting emails at three o'clock in the morning or five o'clock in the morning about court, uh, you know, things are different. So, uh, I, I'm here on behalf of myself and Rob and really request that the commission. Give their request very serious consideration. For a long time, they had three attorneys in their office. And Lucy Levino left to be Yankton County Mental Health Chairman, and how they've got along with just those two. It boggles my mind, to be frank, given the caseload they have, and they've done a great job. And, uh, I think it just helps the county and obviously helps criminal defendants if they had another staff member. And given what's happened in our office, I think it's appropriate. So, thank you.
Who else? Lucy? Okay. Okay, we'll close that item for this evening. Um, I expect some contact over the week and then we'll get you back on. Okay, thanks. Okay, that brings us to item thirteen, public comments. Did anybody care to make a public comment? Here and see none, public comments are closed. Any commissioner updates?
Did you want to go first?
Oh, well, I can go first. Um, I participated, I didn't participate, I think I. Volunteered for the Hyundai Archery Association. I participated. I didn't participate. I think I volunteered for the Hyundai Archery Association or the archery tournament that was the last two and a half weeks. And I think it, although the county as at large didn't prosper from it, I think Yankton, the city of Yankton did. And I think that the city of Yankton probably got quite a bit of sales tax from those archers that were here. And I think that the monies that the county provided to the NFAA for purposes of enhancing that program were well-spent, at least as far as the city is concerned.
They also got a few vaccines out of the deal.
What?
Some of the contestants got a vaccine out of the deal.
I understood they had to have a vaccine to get on a plane. They had to have a vaccine to shoot, had to wear masks.
I know my wife went and gave a few different things. That's all I know about it. So. Any more updates?
Not for me.
Don?
No.
Yeah, I got a couple. Attended the state's attorney open house today. Thank you to the state's attorney's office, Deb, Rob and Tyler. And it was a, a great thing that they did and I appreciate it very much. We have the eight-county meeting coming up on the seventh. I got an email from State Association. I'm sure you guys got it too, about I Bailey Consulting Services. And what I understand is that there is a fee that we would have to pay at Yankton County of two thousand dollars to the association. And then we can utilize I Bailey. And tonight was a great example of can we use this dollars? Can we use ARPA funds for this? And that's something we, I know we can't approve it tonight, but I it's almost my opinion that we could hold a quick special meeting to approve this and then start utilizing them. I know at the state association, they were, they were very firm. Do not spend dollars from ARPA funds without consulting because we don't want to get in a position where we, we think it's covered and it's not. In addition to that, I guess at the next meeting, maybe we should just discuss ARPA funds and our plans for them in the future. But I would propose that we, you, we pay this two thousand dollars, get I Bailey to start working with us on this before we have these guys come back because we won't have an answer for them by next meeting unless we get this consulting fee taken care of.
Maybe, maybe we should put that on our list of things to discuss, discuss for the next meeting.
Got it down.
Yeah. Well, my, my only concern is if, if we don't have this two thousand dollar paid, I don't believe we can use I Bailey until then. But other things I have, there was some good news. Rural housing, the city of Utica approved a new housing development. So it's pretty exciting that, I guess, my closest thing I have to hometown is, is growing. And there's also a new house in, going up in Westerville. So that's, that's good news. Those, those communities have been not growing up in population for a long time. And it's good to see growth in those areas. And that is all I have. Thank you.
I do not have any updates other than eight-county meeting Thursday.
We are hosting.
We're hosting it at Jodeen's at eleven, twelve?
New eleven-thirty registration.
What time for sure?
Usually everybody gets there a little bit early. Seven thirty.
If you can't attend, if you've told Patty you can and will not attend, let her know if you would, please. She sent. She had sent, did she?
Valley, have your speech ready, your welcome speech. You have to.
Well, you have to lead the national anthem.
Okay. Okay, with that, I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session for poor relief.
I move we go into executive session for poor relief issues pursuant to SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two and one dash twenty-eight dash thirteen and twenty-eight dash thirteen dash one point three.
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? We're now in executive session. Okay, Mike.
I move we go back into executive session, out of executive session, into regular session.
Second, motion by Fox, second by Clemish to come out of executive session. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We are now back into regular session.
I would like to make a motion. May I?
Please do.
I would move to pen the files CW twenty-one dash oh sixty-five through CW twenty-one dash oh eighty-one based on the following statutes. SDCL twenty-eight dash thirteen dash one point three sub one, twenty-eight thirteen thirty-four point two, twenty-eight thirteen thirty-three sub two, twenty-eight thirteen dash three, twenty-eight dash thirteen dash thirty-three, twenty-eight dash thirteen dash one point two sub two, twenty-three dash thirteen dash twenty-seven sub two, twenty-eight dash thirteen dash twenty-seven sub five and twenty-eight dash thirteen dash thirty-three.
Motion to pen files. Is there a second?
Do you repeat it?
I could, if you'd like.
I'll second that.
I'm not sure, but it seemed like in the fourth from the bottom, we might have said twenty-eight dash thirteen dash one point two. Sub two, okay.
Great.
Second.
Okay, motion to pen by Fox, second by Clemish. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Any items for next meeting? We'll
Heidi Bailey?
Look at the Heidi Bailey contract and either have either have the public defender conversation at the next meeting or we can push that back.
You know, I, I, you guys got all that, that email from Gary, from the association about that, I, you know, I, I know it's inconvenient, but if we could do a, a quick special meeting and authorize that, we could then have them start doing the research because it might take them a while to get back to us as busy as they are, as opposed to waiting to, to meetings. And once we approve it, at that point, then they could start work. And it might, it might be a month before they could get us an answer back that way. So I'm just, I guess that's something we'll have to share with the chair.
Yeah. That urgent for, I mean, I know they want an answer, but.
The longer, the longer we're in the queue, the, you know, longer it's going to take to get an answer. I wanted to, on the next agenda, have discuss, you know, ARPA funds and what our plans are for utilizing those. I'd also like to discuss IT ports. For those that don't know, we're going to need a new IT service come January.
A new what?
IT service. Our current IT is not going to be here anymore come January. So we need to.
Where's he going?
He's, I think he's retiring or something along those lines. I'm not exactly sure. But regardless, we're going to need somebody else. I do have some quotes already, but that's something we're going to need to discuss.
I have five items I'd like to discuss next time. Yeah.
You only get four done. Choose wisely.
I, I think we're, we're getting close to performance evaluation time. And I'd like to discuss the plan to have department heads. If there's done and us do the department heads and to know exactly what we're doing, go over the form and maybe even have a, a training session for department heads and us. I'd like to discuss whether we're going to offer the employees a holiday party sometime in, in the year. I think it worked best after Christmas, the one or two times that we had it. I understand there's some action going on concerning possibility of some precinct changes in how the state sets up their.
Redistricting.
I'm wondering if we want to have some discussion on that. If there's anything we can do.
Yeah, from what I was told, Don, Yankton didn't grow enough. And so there, there's talk of either incorporating portion of Irene or Tabor right now is the two main ones. Because I'm speaking with somebody who's on that.
And there's also a meeting next on the fourteenth, one at two in the afternoon and one at six in the evening in Sioux Falls at the Southeast Tech. If you want to talk to, show up and talk to anybody about redistricting.
And then I take some time, we need to present to the public a, a review of the COVID funds through all the different programs, the money that the county got. How, what we've spent of those funds and where it went to date and what future plans are for those funds. And then the reason, that, that's my fourth one, but I, I got a kind of a half a fifth one that ties to that fourth one. I was approached by a employee of the county and he said, our department has been discussing that the county has over a million dollars of funds that they're holding back that they're going to pay the employees, but they haven't sent it out yet. And I don't know anything about that.
That's, well, I'm unaware, unaware of that as well.
But I think it needs to be put out to the department heads that, because that's not a good understanding for employees. And apparently it's been discussed a lot.
Is that something, Joe, you and Sherry, you guys are the ones who do department head meetings. Couldn't you put that out to them? I think you guys still do it.
What do you mean, put it out to the?
Well, discuss that. Do you guys still do department head meetings? You were doing them like
Yeah, we.
Once a month or twice a month or something.
We were having quarterly, I think, is what we've gone to.
How many employees does a county have? Hundred and forty?
With full time. Well, I'll pass this list on. I almost wonder if ARPA funds is, because I know, Dan, you want to talk about same thing. ARPA funds, what's our plan, where we spend. And, and I think it's good to update on what we have spent too. Yeah, I almost wonder if we should have a separate meeting sometimes for ARPA. We could spend a long time on that.
Well, a lot of those.
Seven thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars a piece for that million dollars.
Should you count me in on that?
No, not me either.
But.
I could see where they're.
Yeah, the reason I said that is, is that ARPA funding, I, I really think we need to get a, a plan together. And if we're going to start using it, whether it be a sanitary district or, or internet or whatever, need to start moving toward that because those funds are only available for so long. And the longer you take, it's, you know, there's, there are some pretty tight deadlines there. So and if we're not going to utilize it, then we're not going to utilize it. But.
My guesstimate is, is that when the federal government continues to go down the rattle or presently following on financial spending, that pretty soon there's going to be a lot of finger pointing and a lot of follow-up. And I think we need to use the funds and be very careful.
Why? And, and I Bailey is a great, great reason why we need to be utilized in those services. So.
Great. Any, any more items for the next meeting?
I move that we adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Fox, second by Clemish. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?